This is the super fun part of my goal, this presentation is to not read the slide. One at a time, because we'll put it in the rap, so hopefully you have a chance to sneak a peek. If you did not, that's okay. I'll give you high level elements. Also, there's some terminology in here that's specific to thought exchange. I'll try to explain that as much as possible. But again, if there's any initial questions of just confusion on what's on the screen, please feel free to stop me, just so that everyone can follow along. So from a results standpoint, you can see the basic stats at the top. And to put it in perspective, you can participate at various levels within this thought exchange. So you can choose to sift some questions, you can choose to just provide an open-ended response. But that 947 illustrates or demonstrates the amount of individuals that participated in some shape or form, and you do have to actually answer, provide something to be in that 947. That's not people that just look through their nose, they actually have to engage in something. The 687 are those individuals that formally responded to the open-ended response rates question that was on the card to me. So again, you have some survey, you have some open-ended. The great thing is, if you look at that first bullet on there, we had 265 conditional respondents, so that's those that formally provided a thought. Then what we did, if you're looking at full participation in the 2021 survey, and then you can see the additional number, which is 525 for those who were engaged. So again, I'm taking that difference of 687 thoughts were provided. That's people that truly gave feedback. That's 2865 more people than participated in our phone quote-unquote "survey" that happened in 2021. There's also some ratings that Vagashne provides, which gives context as far as how many thoughts people can rate. So that means after you provide feedback, think of social media. You know, you like a post, you say "great job," whatever that may be. You're engaging in what somebody else has said. They say that an engagement ratio of 15 or greater shows very strong engagement. So it's people connecting with each other, which is the whole goal of this. And you can see that our rating was 15, our card to me, 21. So a ratings ratio is really good, what we have, because it shows that strong engagement. A low alignment, if you're looking at the barrier going, "what does that mean?" That's to be expected, and what that means is, since this is our first formal thought exchange, this is a new opportunity for everybody. So there's a lot of thoughts folks wanted to probably get out that they haven't had the opportunity to share in this format. So that means there's various thoughts on people's minds. As we continue to do this, most likely alignment will be more focused, because we will more focus the actual engagement opportunity, if that makes sense. So low alignment does not mean anything negative. It's more that we just have all sorts of different feedback, but there were common themes that you will see later in this data. We have 1% of the participants, so that 947, I use the Spanish translation feature, and that is the only other language that was formally utilized that we can track through there. So community breakdown, this is, I'll just spend two seconds on this. This is to give you context of who took the survey. So again, looking at those that had children in the district and what the grade was of the youngest child, and then those that do not have children presently in the district, doesn't mean that they didn't have a former parent. But that's the breakdown, and obviously you can see the greatest engagement from that pre-K through 5 period, and then you can see it pick back up a little bit at high school, to be honest, I'm sure. I know we have a former principal in the audience here, and some others that that middle school period. That is a transition point in general in engagement. You know, your other kids get a little bit older, but then things change. So what you see on here is, you'll also see further down, is consistent with communication and other engagement. Obviously, we want all grades to be equally engaged, but nothing on here was alarming from the participation standpoint. So common themes, you'll see a lot of these words and these themes throughout the data presentation here. And this is great, because this is all derived from feedback. So again, when you're looking at what's important, what were things that came up frequently? This isn't a negative or positive, this is just choosing themes in general. You can see, you know, from quality to learning to students to support, you can see all of that, which is obviously very much tied to our vision of priorities that will come up in multiple areas as we review the data and results. So we're gonna dive in first to the flows of the questions. When I go through these here, we've broken up the 20 that were asked, excluding the "what grade is your youngest child?" because we just went over that. So you'll see the breakdown on 19 questions. And certain questions were added to obtain the longitudinal data, meaning I'll be able to show you in 2021 how our current results measured up to that, understanding that we had quite a few more participants than 2021. One thing to keep in mind too, when it comes to the fact that this isn't a formal survey of sorts, there's gonna be that margin of error. And in 2021, I believe it was 4.8% plus or minus was the margin of error from what was provided by Baker Tilly. So obviously, at least that you see, could be plus or minus, that 4.8% of where that data lie. We don't have a margin of error, because this is a conversation and general survey data. But what I can say is, as you go through this, if you wanna add that roughly 5% give or take, we are still well ahead in the positive category in the majority of the data that we're gonna present. So first broke out the 19 survey questions to help everyone kinda get a grasp for what we're talking about. Because I know I have the longest part of the agenda today, so I wanna keep you all ready and focused, so we're on performance. Well, I'll get up, maybe do a little developmental design class, and maybe go to the next one. But again, for a focus standpoint, this section is 100% longitudinal data-based, meaning we are able to measure against 2021 and most instances 2019. So we start with grading the district. You can see the question that's asked on here, and as we go through it, I don't reiterate the question, I think it's pretty obvious as we go through it, but they were all geared towards giving a grade of A through fail for different areas. So we start with public schools in Shakopee in general. And there'll be a common theme on the screen here as you go through. On the left, we have 2023 data, and then the right 2021. You can see overall, some of the highlights for everyone here is that 72% of the respondents gave a grade of A or B, which is 24% higher than the previous period. And then building upon that, which I'll dive a little bit deeper here in a second, is that the PDK data for schools, that percentage is actually 54%. So if you're looking at all of this, our grade and our responses, A and B, is much higher, not only from our previous period, but also the PDK data as well. And then when you're looking at the negative grades, we have only 5% of the respondents that gave a D or F compared to 7% in the previous period. And an interesting piece you can see at the bottom is we had a smaller portion choose not to respond this time around versus 31% didn't feel comfortable or did not in general offer a grade for the district. And again, out of, just to give you some feedback, the amount of people, let me go here. Actually, we'll get that in a minute, pardon me. So PDK comparison, just putting this up there, if you have not seen this before, this is something that's published each year. 2022 is the last formal report that we're able to balance against, but there is a question that is exactly the same, pretty much give or take, as what we just asked about a grade. So you can see, this is just some backup information for everyone here. When this was conducted, it's about 1,000 people. It's very specific how they choose this nationwide. They do have a margin of error on this, and you can actually see the ratings from prior BB born, actually, it takes a dip, right, 1983. And you can see that from 2017 to courage to 2022, overall across the US, there has been a steady increase, but it's fluctuating just above 40% across the US. So what I have on the screen here is just that reminder of, according to 2022 data, 54% of adults gave an A or B in the PDK. And again, we had 72% that gave an A or B. And you can see some of the past data relative to that odd year. And again, I don't wanna spend a ton of time in PDK, but in past surveys, we have compared to that, had that as a little bit of a baseline for us to understand where we sit. And one that we thought was interesting is just the PDK comparison. In the report, they noted that the boosting confidence in public schools occurred among non-parents only, and that those that were current parents, their ratings were down. So then Thought Exchange had a great little way for us actually to show that. So what you can see here, on the left, is actually our non-parent responses specifically to the grade question. And you can see that the scores are actually very positive, if you're looking at 100%. Even though they hide, fail, and unsure, you can certainly, Joe's already probably done the math of what that percentage could be. But again, showing this is more of a favorability. You can see we beat the curve and have positive feedback from those that aren't even attending our school, in addition to those that are, which you can balance back to PDK. Now, this is, again, we're back to our data, where PDK is our baseline, just for schools outside of Shakopee. The reason that that grade was provided, that A through F with the majority being A or B, is listed here. There's a few things I wanna point out, just so it's apples to apples for everybody. Student support and student performance were added as choice selections this year, and we didn't remove student behavior. Again, they keep it more on things that are in line with our vision and mission, and really where we work. And student support received the most responses. Quality of instruction as a reason went down about 9% from the previous period, and financial management as a reason also went down 9%. And then leadership and management went down, and also the other choice. So when you see things going down here, again, this isn't a positive or negative. It's more about what, how our community is measuring our success of a school. And I wanna be very unbiased in everything that I present here, so I'm not my inference from what we're looking at here. But again, this is just how they're measuring our performance as a school district, and what they're thinking of when they're giving that grade. So the fact that student-based elements of support, performance, and instruction are more than 50% of the reasons why folks are giving a grade is obviously something that aligns, good or bad, right, with what we have as our vision and priorities. And then those other elements were not the main reasons for their grades. The other, we thought it would be important just to show, you know, you're curious, like, what is that other? So roughly 17% of respondents used that as an opportunity to provide some general feedback. This is very common, especially since this was our first thought exchange, that that's a great opportunity to provide that feedback that you are just really excited to share. So many folks did that here. As we continue on with these community conversations, I would expect that to go down, because we'll give people other ways to provide that feedback. But you can see even with that, you know, student safety, connection with the teachers is important. I value the communication, I value the quality of teachers and support staff. For those, that shows other. You can still see there's a common theme of students, the learning environment instruction, being what their feedback was related to relative to grade. So financial management, Bill and his team would hopefully be very happy to see this on here, as I know everyone has the fragility as well, but it is higher than the previous survey period. So we're looking at 41% given an A and B, which is again about 14% higher than 2021. And we had 45% of the previous period have a grade of D or F, and we are only at 12% for this period. Again, not apples to apples with the number of participants. We had much more, but that gives us more opportunity to have fluctuation, and fluctuation is gone the way that's presented. This is one of the areas where you will actually see 2021 and 2019 survey data from Baker Tilly on the right-hand side to be able to measure to. So that you, again, I'm only recording on 2021 in the narrative, but you can see both on that right side. School board grade. So only 24% of respondents felt that they were unsure about providing a grade versus 46% that did not provide in the previous period. So being someone in communications, just sharing, I think that that shows awareness of the school board and their ability to be able to confidently provide feedback. 50% of respondents gave grades of A and B, which is 27% higher than the previous survey period. And then the D or F went down roughly 7%. So again, the largest fluctuation is not only gonna be the higher grades and the lower negative grades, but the fact that we didn't have as many folks that were just not sure and felt that they could provide a grade and an answer to the school board's performance. And trends in the last 12 months. Again, if you're looking at this, you can infer certain things. And again, I'll keep this as unbiased and factual as possible, but roughly the same percentage of respondents in the current exchange and the previous survey shared that there was an improvement, and 5% less respondents felt that the performance got worse, and more respondents noted that they were unsure. So again, trying to just give, how does this, this lack, more people felt that they could provide a response. And this measures relative to the grades that you were provided. So again, looking at how engaged you are, how you're connected, and also perhaps people not being aware of the school board in the previous 12 months. So they can't provide a grade on how you trended, because perhaps they weren't as engaged 12 months ago. That's something that you could potentially infer from the unsure answer on this one relative to the unsure answer on the previous, if that makes sense. Superintendent grade. So 53% gave an A or B, which is 23% higher than the previous survey period in 2021. Roughly 60% chose not to answer this question in the previous survey period versus 25% that chose not to answer in this period. So again, if we're inferring the ability to answer questions from those that are being engaged, they feel that they're able to do so on this versus perhaps the previous survey period where they were more unsure or unable to respond answers. And then similar with the school board, looking at the trend in the last 12 months, there was a greater shift in the grade being better than the previous 12-month period. And then the percentages associated with grades stayed the same. And then the percentages associated with grades stayed the same, mean worse or unsure roughly stayed the same. So there was no change when people chose any of those. If we're looking at previous years and this year, those that felt it was either same, worse, or not sure, that percentage kind of hung out there a little bit, but you can see the difference in the better component. And again, without providing too much color or flavor, my own thoughts on this too. We all know where the district was in previous years, and Dr. Redman was hired in November of twenty eighteen and the survey periods prior is twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one. So again, if you're looking at performance, awareness, where people are at in this grade, a trend of having less engagement, you know, isn't something that's a negative because they feel more confident providing an answer. So now we shift to education-based questions. So there is one new question that we added in here, and there's also some longitudinal pieces. This is one that we had in previous periods where we compared the quality of education provided by our district relative to others in neighboring school districts. I know there's lots of digests up here, so I'm going to try and summarize this for you. So if you're looking at the Likert scale, it basically sums up for you the positives. So forty-one percent stated that Shakopee provided a higher quality of education compared to twenty-three percent that chose much better or somewhat better in twenty twenty-one. So you have that increase from twenty-three percent to forty-one percent. And then the rest of the percentages, a relatively comparable percentage, felt the quality of this education was not as good. So that answer didn't necessarily go up or down. That was about the same. But we did see forty-one percent say that there was higher quality education than the twenty-three in twenty twenty-one. Continuing on that quality of teachers, again, this is the same question, just focused on teachers versus education. The Likert scale on this had forty-nine percent. I notice there's a take roll on there, too, quality of teachers compared to twenty-three percent as well. And then a relatively comparable percentage felt quality of teachers was either comparable or not as good as other districts. And without being too wordy, the responses on teachers and quality of education was pretty consistent as far as what people provided for their answers in this exchange, with it being better going up slightly from previous years. So again, most responses to quality of education were almost identical to quality of teachers. There wasn't a disparity between the two on this community conversation. A new question that we put in here, so again, we don't have anything to measure against, but we will going forward, was the competitiveness of after-school activities than sports. And you can see the Likert scale here is twenty-eight percent on what you would call a positive response, a much better or somewhat better, with the majority of responses being in the about the same category. Somewhat worse was obviously much smaller than either the same or the positive side. Three percent have the much worse category on there, too. So again, the majority of folks felt that it was competitive, that there's opportunity to increase the somewhat better, much better on there. And then academies of Shakopee, this is not a new question. This is something that we asked. So you will see comparison data on the bottom. This is how well you believe we are offering real-world experiences that prepare students for career and post-secondary success. It went up slightly. So fifty-five percent said that we'd be providing a higher quality of education relative to the academies compared to forty-seven percent in twenty twenty-one. So again, that's using the extremely well or somewhat well rankings. And then there wasn't much change from the other items that were on there. The percentage of respondents, however, though, that noted unsure went down, which again, is similar to superintendent and school board. You could infer that more folks felt they were able to give an actual answer on this than previous periods where they were unsure or not able to provide a response to this question. And then these, this is our new area. So again, you're not going to see longitudinal, but there's a lot of things that we can build upon here. And this is really the section that's spoken on, focused on connection before we get to the open-ended analysis. So the first one focused on a safe environment. And you'll see that all of these questions are really focused on a high feel. So this is the feeling of safety for their child in attending school in the district. So again, nothing to compare to, but sixty-three percent strongly agree and agree. And you can see that there's twenty-one percent that really did offer an opinion on this, and then about sixteen percent that were in the disagreement category. Again, one of the great things with Thought Exchange is our ability to kind of run an X Y axis to some of this and be able to showcase there is a correlation between a child's grade level and that feeling of safety. And you will see, I know the shading isn't always perfect on the screen here, but those that are highlighted in the deep blue and then it fades off a little bit show where those percentages are the highest. So you have that pre-K through five period where that feeling of safety and agreeing and feeling that is much greater in that pre-K through five, and then it picks back up a little bit in the ten through twelve category. So again, if you were thinking, when we started this presentation, we talked about that engagement period as well, and that middle school being that, you know, different period for family engagement. Some of these also correlate to that as well. Priorities. This was another new question, and this was the, being able to have a Likert scale of feeling that your child's learning and success is a high priority. This was extremely positive. You can see seventy-three percent are strongly agree or agree that the child's learning and success is a high priority in Shakopee. There was a neutral stance at seventeen percent, and less than ten percent chose the disagree or strongly disagree in this area. And then again, taking a minute to overlay quality of teacher rating to view on education being a priority. Similar, the darker the blue, the greater the percentage that you can correlate. So again, you can see that for those where they have the high quality of education and teachers, and then also feeling like their learning success is a priority, you can see that those things come together. So again, our teachers are a reflection of the priority. The instruction holds all come together. I don't think that's anything that's shocking to anyone, but it is positive to see that there's some data that backs up the responses relative to that. Respect. This was a great one to be able to add in here, and this is just respected by school staff. Again, this is even more positive than the previous question. It was eighty percent that were over that agree and strongly agree, and less than seven percent on what we would call the negative disagree, strongly disagree. And then you can see as we go through this, it's probably a little bit late for me to point it out, but if you go back through it, you will see, you know, answered seven forty-six on this one. So again, if you go back to the beginning of the conversation, we had some people that drop off. They get sick of taking the twenty. They skip them. You can't do that. So we started with eight hundred and some odd. We get down to that seven forty-six. Many people, you can see two hundred and one chose not to answer. But as we go through this, there are still very healthy numbers compared to the four hundred or so that took place in our call surveys in previous years. Best interest. You can read this on here, but this is relative to school administration making decisions in the best interest of students and families. Being just straightforward on this question, this is open to interpretation, right? What does that mean? What decisions? There's things that we can hone in on a little bit more, so the answers here are just relevant to that vague question overall. And of course, you're probably going to inherently just think of something that recently happened. Did you like it or did you not the outcome? So I think we can hone in on this one a little bit more, but just from a general sense, it was roughly fifty-eight percent broadly agreed, strongly agreed. And then you can see a larger percentage that are just like, I don't know. So again, we can hone in on that, and maybe provide more meat for folks to respond to, but still a very small portion that were on the disagree or strongly disagree side. So would rather see opportunity from a neutral standpoint than that higher percentage be negative. So that's a, that's a good observation from here. And of course, we know that we talk a lot about save or pride as a school board, as a district, and we ask this question to those on the conversation. Are you proud to have your child and family in Shakopee Public Schools? Again, this is the first time you've asked this. There was sixty-five percent that were agree and strongly agree, less than ten percent that were on that disagree standpoint. And then those that, you know, it's probably a goal for all of us, can we get that twenty-six percent to feel even more connected and be able to say that they truly feel proud? I don't think neutral is negative or positive, but again, we always want to try and get that number up as much as possible. All right. It's my favorite part, everyone, is communication. Are we still, everyone with me? I'm along for the agenda. We're coming. We're almost there. How do you, how aware do you consider yourself when it comes to school programs and events? There was a longitudinal data to rate this against. I just put summaries on the side since we've been looking at a lot of tables and charts and things of that nature. The summary is that overall awareness increased twenty-eight percent from the previous period, resulting in ninety-one percent saying they feel aware and somewhat aware of what's going on. Obviously, again, someone's sense of awareness is their own internal judgment if they feel like they know what's going on. But if there's a comfort level to be able to say they're aware and very aware, that's obviously something positive we can build upon. And then you'll see roughly nine percent that were in that unaware, very unaware category. This was, again, another pit stop. We can do all sorts of other things for days with correlation, so we try not to get too crazy, but how does awareness impact pride in your schools? Just seems like it'd be something fun to balance. So again, I don't think any of this is shocking, but the more proud, are more the aware that individuals are what's going on, the more proud they are. So again, that's just amplifying our need to be able to share with things that are going on, make people feel connected to what's going on. That sense of pride, in theory, if you're looking at that, should go up significantly if we keep doing a good job of that. And then also, how does awareness of district and school news correlate to grade level? So this was just looking at areas of opportunity. Do we feel that maybe we're more engaged for those that participated in the younger group versus older group? And similar to previous grade level comparisons, those in that pre-K through five seem to be the most strong. And then we pick back up a little bit in that ten through twelve period. So there's always opportunity to make sure we continue that in the middle school period. And then I don't think this will come as a shock, but I do think it's interesting when you see the actual data that supports it relative to this conversation. Is that electronic media increased by fifty percent from twenty twenty-one? And printed materials decreased by twenty-three percent? And again, this is almost identical to the previous question asked in twenty-one and nineteen. And then the consistency of communication. This one's pretty straightforward. The seven forty-four that hung in at this period of time, the majority felt that they had consistent communication. You can see any drop off of that, and then there was just your standard, you know, neutral standpoint in general. So now this is, this is the open-ended piece. We're on the home stretch, and this is where we, probably the most leeway and opportunity for those that engage in this conversation because this is raw data. So this is the question that was posed, that there was no selections. It was just put in what you think. And then as you recall from how this works, is you then get to rate what other people said. You can't respond and say, that's awesome, that's great, but you can at least give it between one and five stars or pass it. And that's how you were sharing your feedback on what others put in here. You can see everything that was put in. If you chose to scroll through all nine hundred or so, you could. We did have a moderator featured in here, so if anything from a profanity standpoint or was not related to this at all could be flagged, and we really did not have a ton of issues with that. So the AI world provides a great summary. As we all know, this is not something that we wrote, but we were able to generate. So it's completely unbiased, and it's based upon the actual information that was put in in comments, but I'll try to read it not verbatim, but overall for you, that there was, there was a wide range of opinions and values that were focused on the quality of education. Topics such as quality of teachers, diverse learning opportunities, support for students with special needs was something that came up enough that it was generated in this response. There was notes about support staff, safety measures, activities for schools of being areas that people wanted to provide extra feedback on, and then accountability and responsibility for students, so looking at more of that learning experience. And then there were some notes about non-English speaking support. And overall, the responses demonstrated a desire for quality education that meets the needs of all students. So if you go back to that word cloud that we had, those were all the common themes. This is just a word or paragraph explaining that the majority of comments in there really truly were focused on students and education, which I commend everyone up here for that because this is an open book. People could have wrote about whatever they wanted, and the majority of the comments were truly focused on students and education. Common topics by themes, and it's very important when you're looking at this. This is not a ranking of what was important. There's no positive, negative correlation of this. This is just things that came up, a key word by topic in all those responses that were provided. So it doesn't mean that, again, anything is negative or positive. It could be both. It's just, these are the things that were talked about the most, and we'll learn a little bit more here in a second. So breaking it down even further, again, thinking of all these folks providing just an open-ended response. This is the summary of the top five themes, breaking it down even further, that were put in their comments. So again, it's teaching quality, it's support staff, it's our facilities that are able to accommodate that, it's diversity at various different levels, and it's relationships. Off-wide, you can definitely go through and read through the summary, which is a summary of thoughts that were put in in each one of these categories. But again, I think this is great, that the top five themes, this is not what we ranked. This is truly what the conversations were, were all around these five subjects, these top five subjects. And then this is just a snippet, again, trying to understand how this works, some of the highest-rated themes. This is the raw data where someone said, I like teachers. They are the backbone of the district. And that got a four-point-four rating, and twenty-nine people basically liked it, right? They said, yep, I agree. That's something I can get on board with. So you can see some of those other things in here, and again, this is a snapshot of what was pulled together to have the data that we're talking about today. There's two slides here just to give you, again, a little bit more of a snippet of what we talk about the highest-rated thoughts, things where people were choosing those five stars. They were generally choosing five stars when it talks about valuing teachers, the staff, the diversity of our student body, our curriculum, the academies model. There was a note about expressing the need for more staff, smaller class sizes, sizes, pardon me, better pay for teachers, and discipline and accountability as well as career exploration. So again, if you were to take all the common themes out of what people rated the highest, that's what you're looking at here in addition to safety and respect. So again, there's no bias on this as far as people were talking negatively or positively. It's just saving these topics in general or where we got the most engagement from others, where they were commenting on these topics. On the flip side, there's obviously topics in here as well, but people share their thoughts that get the least amount of engagement, meaning folks just choose either to rate three or less. In this case, it's one, or choose not to rate it at all. So those topics are listed here, whether it's things that weren't working, how we choose to support social emotional learning, other things of that nature. It's all very transparent. These things were put in here. Those were comments. Those are not filtered out. It's just from a star perspective, they got the least amount of engagement. Again, a complete unbiased, just factual. These were in there with the least amount of rankings. There's three areas, and we're on the home stretch here, but three areas where there's a really great opportunity to look at A D common ground differences, basically, for things where we can look at where did people seem to have two different sides to a topic that comes together. So we have real-world learning, and then also the academies and valuing diversity. You can see that on each side, we have one hundred and twenty-five that focus topics on real-world learning, and a hundred and ten that we're looking at academies and valuing diversity. Now, what does that mean? I could spend a whole presentation on that, each one of these. But what we wanted to let you know is these were identified as areas where we wanted to dive deeper. And Dr. Redman or Mr. McClosbridge wanted to put groups together and say, "Let's figure out where both sides of the table are at on the subject. What are things we could do better, where people ask, you know, educating our kids and supporting our kids? What is the difference between that and our community's eyes? We have comments that could help us do that." Again, I'm not presenting that today, but these were three areas where they felt that there was consistency in a theme that had two different sides to that theme. So again, it's real-world learning, the academies, support staff, and diversity, and educating kids versus supporting kids. This is a fun quote, I won't read it verbatim, but this is one that I've got one of the highest likes in here. And it could have been timing, it could have been various pieces, but it was a top quote that was in there. You can talk about the fact that the district is stable, set up well for success. This is someone that's relatively new to the district, and just a positive response in here. So again, this is verbatim, this is not AI-generated, this was provided by a community number. And then the next is, what are we going to do with the data? So there's a list here, as you would imagine, leadership, building administrators, we're sharing this information with them. There's critical areas where we want to use this conversation, this data, to help with things that are a priority for the board of the district. There's system and structures and school year efforts that we want to incorporate this into, and areas that maybe we want to have an additional exchange, or we want to go onto that A D overview. We will be sharing this with the community, that was one thing that we said, is there's an opportunity to basically take what I showed you here, consolidate it, have a little website of sorts, where you could click around and do your own analysis within the data that we put in there. And we also have a newsletter that goes out every September to all taxpayers, mail it to home and community members. We'll have a highlight of some of these pieces here without my voice behind it. And then we're certainly welcome to dive deeper as a board on August seventh. And then this data is going to be added to our bank, so that as we continue to have engagement opportunities, we can keep measuring the data that we've collected. That is the longest you'll probably ever hear me speak to the board, so I apologize, but I'm also very grateful to be able to relay it. And at this point, again, knowing that if you want to dive super deep, I may be able to have more data to do that on the seventh, but would be happy to either just hear general feedback or answer any questions that you may have at this point.
I think this is phenomenal. I appreciate all the work that went into developing it and synthesizing all the data, and I know that takes a lot of work. So thank you for all of that, and being this charged, because this is very important information for the district. And someone that's been on board for a few years, it's great to see the positive reinforcement in our school district that we haven't had for a while. And so I think that's, who knows, to the administration, the teachers, the principals, the board members for hanging in there and just focusing on what we need to do to get better, to get us back into communicating, building that trust with our community. And I think that this survey is definitely shows that we're on the right track, so. It's a lot of information to digest, and so I'm going to prepare to all board members to take some time to think about the data and bring questions and comments further than we can talk about tonight. But at our August seventh meeting, we definitely will have quite a bit of time to dig deeper into the information that we just provided. Any comments, questions, right now?
I got one. I thought the correlations of the answers were really interesting. And I was just curious if we have that for the, like, the overall grade of the school and the reasons for the grade?
Yes, any, any data that's in the closed end questions, we can run a correlation against.
Maybe that's something, can we do that for the August seventh meeting?
Yes, that I can do instantaneously to with the group, so yeah, absolutely.
Good question, Jen. Anything else for Tiffany right now? And I guess, again, I encourage you, if you think of something that you would like to know, maybe give Tiffany a heads up before our August seventh meeting, so she can be prepared to pull that information and bring it to the board meeting for all of us to hear what it says. Thank you, Tiffany, for your presentation. We're going to move on to item eight on our agenda, which is our action portion. We have two items under that area tonight. And the first one is the consideration to approve some policies. We have our policy chair and our vice chair, Justin, to present. And again, I think Jeff's going to reiterate, these are policies that we have to approve tonight because of law changes that either happen July one or won't be happening on August one, that impacts our school district. Pretty much it was all going on the state session, but just wrap up.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Redman. So linked in the, in the agenda is a master updated list. And you can click on that and work through, there's many policies on this list. Everything on this list is reflective of new laws that have gone into place, either already or very soon at the state level. And I attended an update, it was at AMSD, but it was a presentation by MSBA. So after here's the lore, but Terry Morrell was, was one of the presenters on policy, and folks who know him know he's, he's one of the people who writes the model policies at the state level. And the big takeaway I got from his presentation was, you know, policies are our opportunity to synthesize state law at a local level, you know, appropriate for our district, and present it to the people of our district. So they can see, when they look, when they look on our website, they look at the policies, they can see how that state law applies to us. And the consequence of not having updated policies means that people are either misinformed or that information is just not available to them, and their only recourse then at that point is to go look at state law directly. And the second point beyond that is, we have no choice but to follow state law. And so if we choose as a board to not update these policies, to not provide a policy that reflects state law, that, that doesn't mean we don't follow the law, we still have to follow the law. So that really is kind of, at least for me, that was my takeaway, and really the reason we're doing this tonight. So we are, the ask for the action item is that we approve the policies on this list based on the changes in state law. And I'm going to read the justification for that, and then we're not going to look at the policies directly. Assuming we approve these today, we're still going to look at them and go through the normal review process later this year. It's just the timing is such that we, we don't have a choice but to acknowledge the state laws that are already in effect. So that's why we're doing this today. So I'm going to read just a couple paragraphs at the top of the document here. So because some revisions are effective immediately or in the summer of 2023, and because the revisions are largely taken word for word from 2023 legislation, school boards may choose to adopt changes in a single meeting or as an emergency pursuant to model policy two hundred and eight. This is a local decision for school boards. In accordance with policy two zero eight, and due to laws going immediately into effect, the school board will approve all the policies on this list via a one-step process pursuant to the emergency language in policy two zero eight at its July twenty-four regular board meeting. And then there's two paragraphs from the policy that are relevant here. Section four, paragraph C. In an emergency, a new or modified policy may be adopted by a majority vote of a quorum of the school board in a single meeting. A state that regarding the emergency and the need for immediate adoption of the policy shall be included in amendments. The policy adopted in emergency shall expire within one year following the emergency action, unless the policy adoption procedure stated above is followed and the policy is reaffirmed. So I'm going to chime in here, that's what I was referring to. We are actually going to go through our normal process to review these policies, but we need to approve these now because of the timeliness of the changes. The school board shall have discretion to determine what constitutes an emergency. If a policy is modified with minor changes that did not affect the substance of the policy or because of a legal change over which the school board has no control, the modified policy may be approved at one meeting at the discretion of the school board. So that's my presentation, does anybody have any questions for me or Chair Peterson and Dr. Redman, any comment?
I guess I'll just add one thing to that Jeff's pointing on the presentation from MSBA. If you're interested in watching that presentation, it is available on MSBA's website. All you have to do is log in, if you're using it in a password, and you will have access to that presentation. It's about a month and a half, but it is extremely valuable, very informative. Terry Morrell from MSBA, along with Gary Lee, the deputy director of MSBA. And then we've drawn blank on the other staff person that was there, but talks a lot about these policies and the impact that it has on school districts. So I think if you remember, one of the things that I had mentioned, I believe it was at the end of June, when we had Representative Tappkey here talking about unfunded mandates. Some of these policies are either unfunded, that are costing the district some money to implement, or there's some money behind it, but not enough to fully fund what we have to do to put these policies into effect. So I just want to call that out as an explanation of what an unfunded or some funded mandates. So any questions for Jeff, Dr. Redman? Then I'll make a motion to approve the policies as presented. A motion by Peterson and a second by Groffy to approve the master updated list of policies that were just presented. Any further discussion? Say none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks very much, Jeff. I know meeting point two is the academies of Shakopee agreements, and I will turn that back over to Tiffany for another explanation.
Should only be about twenty-five minutes, just for everybody to see. This is one of many exciting renewal presentations that you've seen. It's very brief here for the academies of Shakopee and our champions. So today, we're discussing arts and communication, that's our action item today, as you recall. The board has previously approved the champion agreement with N Trust for Science and Tech, the city in accounting for human services, Bell Fair in the previous meeting for the ninth grade academy. And we had a few others that operated in St. Francis for health science. And then, then our B and E in engineering and manufacturing, we are in the final stages. So at the next meeting, you should see the formality of those agreements as well. So today, the formal requested action, again, this is pretty brief, but just to make sure you're aware of the partnership, would be with the Shakopee Mennoakan Sioux community, noted as SMSC in here, as our arts and communications academy champion. And a summary of the last reporting period for SMSC is listed here. And what I can summarize for you is that they're a very engaged member and extends well beyond the academies of Shakopee. But obviously, this agreement is specific for that. And they also branch over into many other academies, as many of our champions do. Or yes, they're the arts and communication champion, and that's what's formally on this agreement. But they help with B and E, they have things that are going to engineering and manufacturing, our school district in general, different grades outside of this place school. They do a lot to support our students and community. And then the six hundred-plus hours that they regularly do in our school years is just relative to what the contract says that they will commit. And they are very much the time and talent that we're looking for. They're, they're not just providing dollars, they're providing legally job shadows, classroom speakers, they serve as a cap school site, internships, you know, they have twenty-plus staff members that are engaged with our students and community. And they are definitely a great example of what an academy champion is. There's also some great perks that they provide as being an academy champion. And honestly, they probably do this stuff even if they aren't, because they're so engaged in our community. But from a free student membership, from an education perspective, I hope to call it a T. Also, just little things of acrylic and plastic, you can see on the screen here. Sir Hendrickson did a great job with the engineering and manufacturing team, and used all that free acrylic and plastic to put a donor partner wall that's in the engineering and manufacturing wing, and used a donated bear printing machine to be able to put all those logos on there. So there's so many things that our partners do and immersive experiences, and SMSC is definitely a great partner. So their tribal council had already approved at a previous time. The fact that they humanously wanted to continue the partnership as a formal academy champion for the Arts and Com Academy, and presented here for you, would be for our board to approve that partnership and continue to move forward. There would be a signing event, we're due to celebrate everything that they've done, and they're eager to do that after WCP and then some of the big events that they have going on. But today would be just the formal approval that we're recommending to the board. And Dr. Redman, is there anything you'd like to add to that that I may have forgotten?
No, just a, I'll say no, and then I'll start talking. No, a lot of, a lot of great work has gone into this and continuing this partnership, and Shakopee Mennoakan Sioux community and the Arts and Communication Academy. Amazing partners with our school district, and, you know, Tiffany alluded to, you know, even beyond that. So very, very excited, and it's a continuation of, you know, you start to look at that list, and you see the renewals and the signing agreements, and really, really exciting. And you see some of that survey, you know, the community conversation data about real-life learning opportunities. Well, that, this is how that happens. So thank you, Tiffany, for your work on this and many others. And very excited for, you know, the next five years of working in partnership with Shakopee Mennoakan Sioux community.
So with that, this is an action item.
I'm going to make the motion. Second.
A motion by Mohammed and a second by Smith to approve the Shakopee Mennoakan Sioux community as the arts and communications academy sponsor for the next five years. Any further discussion? Say none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. So we're going to move back up to item three on our agenda, which is our safer pride portion. And I believe that, because I was hoping the person that we wanted to recognize would be here. But I understand that unfortunately, she wasn't able to be here tonight. So our safer pride tonight was to recognize Anjaka Contreras, who has been our city council liaison member for the past now fifteen months, and I've been on board, so at least four years. And I mean, Anjaka was, you couldn't have found a more committed person to being at our meetings. If she had questions, she didn't hesitate to reach out and ask. She was very engaged, she was at events, she was always there, always supporting us. And it was just great to see her commitment to our schools on behalf of the city of Shakopee and her work in the city council. So we appreciate, Anjaka may be watching, I'm not really sure, but we appreciate you and everything that you've done for our school district over the past four years. And we will get our certificate to you in the near future. So let's give her a round of applause. And before we move on to committee reports and other information tonight, I just want to recognize a board member tonight who has been accepted into the Humphrey Policy Fellows Program for the twenty-three, twenty-four cohort. Mohammed, we are extremely proud of your acceptance into that program for the next twelve months. And just a little bit about the program, there are thirty-four Minnesota leaders from diverse professional and personal backgrounds that have been accepted into the program. And what the Humphrey Policy Fellows Program is, is a program that's And what the Humphrey Policy Fellows Program is, is a program that's equipping all of the individuals in the program with skills and abilities to inspire, organize, work effectively to advance the common good. One of the most important assets of this program is the relationships that will be formed within the group of students, as well as other leaders in business, nonprofits, and government. They focus on mindfulness to build a personal awareness of individual leadership styles and skills to work with others, strategic competence to diagnose opportunities and constraints, and work effectively across sectors, and persuasion and collective action skills to engage and motivate others to work towards common goals. And all of those, definitely, you are written, or you are throughout our board, you are always trying to achieve a common goal, a common good in our community, and I wish you nothing but the best. I know you'll be very successful in this program, and look forward to seeing that progress over the course of the next year. So let's give Mohammed a round of applause.
Thank you, Governor Chair. Thank you so much. It's a privilege because of what I do here, and also with the commendation of Jim, others, and also my community work. They electonized, and we start September. So thank you very much, and I have a privilege working for the district of Shakopee. So Shakopee schools, you will go to that list, like the other cities, you know, they list, you know, where each one of us, each of the cohorts come from. So Shakopee community there.
Thank you. So moving on to our committee reports and other information, I'll just kick us off tonight with head personnel, personnel negotiations before this meeting, and that continues to progress. And I think that's all I have to share.
Same, as well as PNSB meetings, talking about the 2023 legislation, and model likes being kicked off and then at full force. I got a nice big scrape on my leg over there, so it's a great time.
Tiffany?
Well, did I was wrong, I think. We've been using more coaches, just a lot, we have 87 students this year. I think that's a rise we had.
You have to know how to ride a bike.
Yeah. We can drive. But it's just, it's just been a great, great start, these teams are exciting, I think, for that. And then I get to participate in the coffee at the central building. Got to hear some great stories about maybe some of the antics at such a place. But it was just great to see some of these community members come out. Sure is what I got.
Mohammed?
So.
Aditya?
Well, I don't really have much, I said. I, one thing I do regret is I was unable to go to the bachelor signing event that happened recently, but based on what I've seen on social media, it seems like it went really well. But besides that, I don't think I have anything else.
Michelle, do you have anything to, welcome to, this is your first official meeting on the school board, so welcome.
Thank you. To report, well, our school's like, not first, but our March 29 season is starting up, and I am pleased to now be part of that. So it's beginning a couple weeks, we're going to start with March, and we're actually in the fall in the state here, September, sometime in September.
September 2nd.
Right, September 2nd. So excited to do that. And just this next week, August 1st, we have three of our Shakopee students meeting, two others, will be compatible to Morehead's part of the MNEA, the camp for all state leaders, so looking forward to that.
Awesome, thank you. Jeff?
All my meetings got canceled, so I have nothing.
Jeff?
No updates for community aviation, I have a meeting next week, so we haven't talked since we've met for a couple of years.
Sherman?
Good off. We need to meet on the day for communication and practice assignments, hard for negotiation.
Dr. Redman, anything to add?
No, it's great to be back in person. I miss you guys.
And we're glad you're back and doing well. Mr. Mclausage?
I'm just glad my mic's up very hard.
Tiffany, anything else that you would like to share with us tonight?
I might find a lot earlier.
All right, so our next meeting is actually a board development, board leadership meeting, and that will be August 7. Please make sure you mark your calendars, that's at the district office at 5:00. So it's all our members that we normally meet, so please make sure that you have that marked. And then there's a couple other important events. August 16th is Engage, which is our academy champion and partner event that's here at the high school from 8 to noon. We've got some back-to-school families duty events that are listed in our board book. And then August 31st is our back-to-school staff welcoming event from 7:30 to 11:00 here at the high school. Anything else?
MSBA, this is 13:00 PM Wednesday.
Oh, yes, MSBA, how could I forget that? I thought we knew that. MSBA, District 13 virtual meeting will take place at 6:30. So we have an opportunity to spend some time with other board members in other surrounding districts. That would be great. And then August 7th is also the summer seminar series for MSBA. I don't know if anybody else has signed up for that, but we'd love to see more Shakopee people there. So I have somebody to say bye. Anyway, otherwise, if you're not there, I'll see you at 5:00 for our development meeting that day. Anyone else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion by Grophy and a second by Albridge to adjourn. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries immediately. Thank you.